Okay, it's 5 o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Sandy, would you do roll call, please?
Counselperson Brennan, Bruning, Eric Perry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of you this evening. Feel free to make -- ask questions on the items that are on the agenda. And item number five this evening is a citizen's opportunity to address the council, not on items on the agenda. Items not on the agenda. With that being said, do any of the council people have any conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to number three, which is consent agenda. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the August 25, 2015 council meeting. Fiscal year 2014, 2015 year-end transfers. D, consideration of resolution number 2015-12 entitled "Resolution Approving 2015 Fiscal Year Street Finance Report." And E, claims. You have any questions or concerns over?
We need to change the email -- your email address on the fiscal year street finance.
Yes. To?
I'll write it on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any other additions or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty.
Here.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We move on to four projects. A, Sac City Airport Layout Plan. One is consideration of approving the CDBG drawdown number one in the amount of $1,440.
I would move to approve the CDBG drawdown number one in the amount of $1,440.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the CDBG drawdown number one in the amount of $1,440. Are there any questions or comments? Oh, Curtis?
Curtis, please. Could you review what the Sac City Airport Layout Plan was?
It is a plan required by the FAA to be on file with them in order to qualify for FAA grant opportunities. It has to be updated on somewhat of a regular basis. Sac City has not had an update to their layout plan since the '90s. So it's time to do one again, and it was built into their budget and their projects to do it this year.
What is a layout plan exactly?
It gives a 20-year course of action for the airport and things they plan on doing out at the airport. Typically, just like with any other capital plan, when you're looking out that far in advance, some of them happen, some don't. But it allows the FAA to understand what type of planning you're doing towards the development of your airport.
Sorry to take five or 10 years out that we might not be aware of yet that's in the capital plan.
Well, I know one thing that they are -- and of course, at this point, they're still in the process of developing this. But one thing that I know they're talking quite a bit about is moving the current layout from the standpoint of where the facilities are. They're looking at new hangars at the facility and relocating those hangars to another side of the actual runways.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no further questions or comments, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number two under that is consideration of approving JUB Engineers, Inc.'s bill in the amount of $1,600.
This is the bill. JUB is the company that came in and did the estimate to make sure that the other engineers were within.
Which is new requirement for FAA grants. Make sure that they're not charging you too much for engineering services.
Any other questions or comments?
I would move approving JUB Engineers, Inc.'s bill in the amount of $1,600.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve JUB Engineer, Inc.'s bill in the amount of $1,600. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number three is consideration of approving the city's portion in the amount of $80.
Be 5% of the overall bill.
I'll make a motion to approve the city's portion in the amount of $80.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's portion in the amount of $80. Are there any further questions or comments? Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And item number four is consideration of reimbursing the Airport Commission in the amount of $1,520.
This would be for the advanced payment that they made. They decided they wanted to pay this individual prior to the grant process being set up. We can't approve a grant drawdown until the grant has been approved and signed by all parties. We can now approve a drawdown. The Airport Commission has already paid the bill, so now we would need to reimburse them for the cost of the bill.
I would move to reimburse the Airport Commission $1,520.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to reimburse the Airport Commission $1,520. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving down to B, Sac City Facade Project. Number one is consideration of going out for quotes for short-term line of credit. Adam, do you want to talk about that a bit?
Sure. Last year, there was a public hearing that took place in order to do so, to establish a short line of credit. I'm now asking the council for permission for me to go out and solicit the local business, the local banks, for line of credit to be consistent with the terms of that credit line. I believe it was $300,000 is what we had established at the time, and so that's what I will be going out and asking for.
It's delicious to be able to make up the difference between the time when the bills come due for the facade project and the time when the grant arrives.
Yes. The state usually takes between six to eight weeks to pay the CDBG draws, and during the construction phase of the project, those bills could be as much as $200,000. And so the desire of the city is to establish a short-term line of credit in order to cover the cost during the period of time when we're waiting for the CDBG draws to arrive.
And that will be all done with -- we'll keep that as a local option only?
Correct. My intention is to only contact the three local banks.
And it will all be completely paid back with our grant that we get?
Other than any interest. We have not established a -- we did not build into the project any interest that would be incurred as part of this process.
Are there any additional questions?
I would move to authorize the city administrator to go out for quotes for short-term line of credit in keeping with the public hearing that we had last fall.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to go out for quotes for short-term line of credit with our local banks. Are there any other additional questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number two is consideration of approving the CDBG drawdown number 13 in the amount
There's a very detailed explanation of the entire bill process provided by Frank Design Group within your packet.
When talking to Frank's Design Group, would you thank them for their detailed explanation of that?
I thanked them for it, and then turned around and asked them where the Masons were that were supposed to be here this week. I haven't heard a back on that yet.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve the CDBG drawdown number 13.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the CDBG drawdown number 13 in the amount of $5,840. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consideration of approving Cornerstone Commercial Contractors, Inc. bill in the amount of $9,153.73.
This bill is primarily just for their bonding insurance?
I'll make a motion that we approve Cornerstone Commercial Contractors' bill in the amount of $9,153.73.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Cornerstone Commercial Contractors' Inc.'s bill in the amount of $9,153.73. Any additional comments, questions? If not, a call for a vote.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number four is consideration of approving the city's portion in the amount of $320.
1% of it, are we supposed to be paying to this?
20% of the overall bills, is that what it says in here?
320 doesn't look like it would be the right amount.
No, it does not. I'm wondering if she left a number off of that. Do you have your calculator with you, Sandy? What is $9,153.73 times?
$9,153. $153, what'd you say? 73?
9153.
73.
Did you say 2%?
20%. No, it'd be 10.
So it'd be 1830.
1830?
75.
75. So 1830, 75 would be the correct number there.
1830, 75.
Wonder where that other number?
I'm suspecting when the --
Is that the last times?
Well, I'm going to guess, yeah, that she just didn't change the number.
I would move to approve the city's portion in the amount of $1,830.75.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's portion in the amount of $1,830.75. Are there additional questions or comments? Curtis?
Is the public informed 24 hours ahead of time that's the amount you're going to be approving tonight?
No, but the item itself was on the agenda, and the amount is a minor element of the overall item up on the agenda.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments or questions, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number five is consideration of approving city's advancement of the CDBG funding in
I'll make a motion to approve the city's advancement of the CDBG funding in the amount of $5,840.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's advancement of the CDBG funding in the amount of $5,840. Are there additional questions or comments? If not, a call for a vote.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McGinty.
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number five, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the If there are none, we will continue on with continuing business, which is number six, A, urban development area update.
At this point, I just want to let you know I did talk real briefly with the county supervisor. He said they were still waiting for a response from the county attorney, but based on conversation, I think that Councilman Perry had with the county attorney today, it sounds like we may be getting a response from them fairly soon.
Curtis?
Curtis, please. What kind of response are you expecting?
If anything, only minor requests for changes.
We're setting up -- we have proposed setting up a 28E agreement with the county that would come up with a -- instead of an actual urban development plan, it would lay out the basis for the urban development area that we would establish going within the two-mile radius of the city limits. So if we were to set up the whole thing as an urban development area with some changes in state law, it would mean that everybody in that area would have to sign off in developing a TIF. What we're doing is setting up a 28E agreement, or hopefully setting up a 288 agreement that would say this is how we will establish it. These are the ground rules. Then we can set up the urban development area just for whatever specific property would be needed if there were a company wanting to do something within that region.
And this would help avoid?
This would allow us to set up a TIF district or an development area within about six weeks, as opposed to something much more prolonged it if we didn't have the 28E in place.
It shows to potential individuals looking to come to this area that there is already a -- an acknowledgement and writing between two parties that we are interested in working together to meet a common goal towards commercial development.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to seven, miscellaneous. A, a representative of Sac City Chamber Main Street to address the council. Randy Ledford, that'd be you.
Ripley.
Ripley. Ripley. That's all right. Sorry.
I'm coming to you tonight on behalf of Chamber Main Street and our Business Improvement Committee to talk a little bit about our Blue Space branding initiative that we did a short time ago. First, I'd like to thank our local leaders, the City of Sac City and our city council members for helping recognize the need for updated branding in our community. And a while back, our Business Improvement Committee decided they would help find local funding for this project in our community, which we have done. So at this time, I would like to thank our local businesses, organizations, and community members for supporting this project and donating $5,600 to the City of Sac City. Thank you to Green Real Estate in Action, Iowa State Bank, Citizens Bank, Detail Flowers, Lorraine Hospital, United Bank of Iowa, the following organizations, Ambassador's Club, Sac Development Corporation, Chamber Main Street, and community member, council member Bruce Perry for their donations. We have a check for you guys as well, too.
Thank you.
Would you like to leave that now or later?
Do it now. Let me get that check.
I don't think it's necessary for you to move away.
[laughter]
We're catching cap, man. Where at?
Should we do the front legs?
Should I log in?
If for a leg. Sure. I would like the front leg.
Chams or five?
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to B, a representative of Sac City Airport to address the council.
I do not see him in attendance this evening.
Okay. Then C is consideration of approving Scott Hosting's geothermal permit. Does Scott want to address the council, Scott?
I guess only if it gets denied, I would like to have a little clarification.
Okay. You want to open the discussion?
Sure. Mr. Hosting has requested that a vertical geothermal unit be allowed within an area that's been set by city ordinance to not allow for such an installation. If you look in your packet, the very last page of the information that's given to you will show you a map where Mr. Hosting's location is, is out in the secondary circle area, not the primary circle. To kind of give you an explanation, the primary circle areas within our wellhead protection plan are -- don't allow for -- don't allow for any type of geothermal type of activity. Within the larger scheme, it limits it quite a bit as far as what you can do from a geothermal standpoint, to the point of only allowing for minor geothermal systems. All vertical systems are identified as major systems, not minor systems. There are some horizontal systems that can qualify as minor, but my understanding that vertical is what Mr. Hosting's --
Yeah, what I have been told is that I don't have enough room to do the horizontal, so that's why.
The ordinance was put into place a few years back. You might see there's actually a copy of the ordinance included in your packet. It was passed back in 2012. The establishment purpose of it is actually talked a little bit in the ordinance itself. The idea behind it was, of course, establishing some form of a wellhead protection system that included within that limitations to geothermal within those areas. We also passed a separate ordinance particularly pertaining to a wellhead protection. The elements of it that were put into place, speaking specifically to the boundaries, were recommendations to us from Iowa DNR based upon their belief on what is the proper distance to protect your wellhead system.
On that note, I went through the DNR website, and I found their recommendations to be completely different.
They --
What I found was, they said, read this, minimum lateral separation distance for a vertical GX borehole, which is ground source. Public water supply wells defined as a shallow well, they're talking 400-foot depth distance. And a public water supply well is defined as a deep well, they're talking 200 feet. So I was kind of curious where the guy who came from. And here they're talking 25. I mean, I went through their website today, and that's where they jumped and put in their proposed recommendations on geothermal.
Sure. I understand.
And that's what I came up with.
And we also actually pulled these just today off their website as well. We also received a packet of information when we were putting this into place. Understand, when we put this ordinance into place, we did not write this ordinance. DNR wrote this ordinance on our behalf. They provided us a model, so all of the distances that were presented to us were presented to us by DNR. We did not come up with the recommendations for the distance.
Also, in that closed loop system, you realize that the material used is a food-grade substance, propylene glycol. That's the substance that they use for ground source for the transfer of the heat and cool. The guy told me today that the wells are five-inch wells, 180-foot deep, cased in drought, totally encapsulated this area. And I think on your map, there shows, what am I, about 975 feet, so I'm just?
You are on the inch. That is correct. Yes.
So that's why I thought it was short.
I think everybody, you know, everybody is trying to be ecologically sound is a great thing. And that's -- and we -- I think it's wonderful that we're trying to not put any more carbon footprint into the environment. But also, I mean, I guess if we have the rules in place, I personally hesitate to look at exception. I mean, where does the exception lie? Is it 25 feet? Is it 50 feet? Is it, you know, where do we call the line? In talking to the Water Department Superintendent who was active in this, apparently they did work quite closely with the DNR with it. I did spend quite a bit of time looking at the DNR website, too. I mean, for sure, the 200 is pretty evident out there. I couldn't find 1,000. I kept finding 2,500 feet is what they were suggesting. Now, I don't know where you got the 400. I mean, I mean, as I say, looking at the web, I might -- we might have missed some things. I mean, I spent, you know, I personally am hesitant, I guess, if I hesitate to go against what was, what is the ordinance. I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, it is really close. I understand, you know, but one of my good principal friends said it's not the rules that kill you, it's the exceptions. And I hate to start granting, you know, where do we draw the line in exceptions? I mean, that's, I guess, kind of where I'm sitting right now, but that's just one vote, so I don't know.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions regarding it? Tom, are you there?
Yes, I am. During the conversation, it seems that there's, it's close, but not too far enough away. Is there any way we could cancel it so we can get more information from the DNR and come up with a logical conclusion instead of handling it tonight?
Joe, have answered to that.
The council can choose to take no action and table it this time if they wish to.
I already think we should until we get those figures correct.
Did you hear that, Tom?
No, I didn't.
Gary said he thought we should until we figure out where the discrepancies lie in these figures.
I would agree with that.
Do we need a motion to table it?
You can choose to do it that way if you wish.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to table this until further discussion has been held and that we get more information about the measurements from the DNR. Are there any questions or concerns or comments before we vote?
So if we were to table it, then we would rewrite the ordinance and not grant an exception? Is that what I'm picking up?
My recommendation to you is if you are going to allow this, you need to rewrite the ordinance, and probably the wellhead protection plan, too, because you're allowing an exception to both the wellhead protection plan and to the geothermal ordinance.
And this was done relatively recently, and we can write.
Well, there is a motion. If there aren't any additional comments or questions, I'd call for a vote and see.
Counselperson McGinty.
Tom, are you there?
Yes, I am.
She called your name to vote, yes or no?
Yes.
Bruning.
Yes.
Perry.
No.
Hanson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
How are you planning to proceed with this, so he has some?
I'll communicate with Jim tomorrow to contact DNR and see if they can have somebody in attendance. I suspect he'll probably contact Julie Severs or someone like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Because I think she was the architect of our ordinance originally.
Okay. Okay? All right. We will move on to the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2015-269 entitled "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Many Provisions Pertaining to Chapter 41, Public Health and Safety." Are you still able to hear, Tom?
Yes, just a little bit.
Okay. We are on D, ordinance number 2015-269.
Need an introduction, Mark.
Pardon me?
An introduction.
Yes.
I'll introduce it.
The -- The, the, I do want to point out two portions on this ordinance. The first one is that it identifies purely DNR-owned properties, and it also specifically identifies it for the areas that were previously established. You'll see the exception did limit, the way the exception is written, is it is limiting it purely to, to, I'm sorry, to shotguns using birdshot and bows with the use of arrows, which would eliminate muzzle loading, and it would eliminate the use of rifles and shotguns with single projectiles or slugs. That was consistent with the wishes of the council during the last council meeting. The, the one thing I will point out, and I believe we did include some of the information in your packet, last Sunday, or I guess it'd be a week ago last Sunday, I received information from the DNR that they had discovered that, that there had been dialogue and there had been action by the council back in 2005 or '06, which was limiting it at that time. However, it included the use of muzzle loader and single-shot slugs out of shotguns. That is not consistent with what the direction I received from the council was, so I have written this to the direction of the council, not to the information that was shared to me from DNR that was discussed at that time.
So what you said to them, Adam, is basically what I discussed in the last conference meeting, correct?
Yes. That what is included, Tom, is, is the limitations that you had mentioned specifically during the council meeting, you were interested in seeing, and both Councilman Perry, when he had discussed limiting it to specifically to certain locations. This does not address the, has yet to address the new property issue. This is simply dealing with the existing property issue at this time.
So this would be more restrictive than what the resolution was that-
Correct.
We agreed with DNR.
Correct. But I do know that when DNR was here, they made it very clear that they did not want to truly see an inconsistency in what the, how the role applied on the property. So, you know, his concern there is he didn't want hunters trying to make a determination whether or not they were in an area that allowed muzzle loading or didn't allow muzzle loading. That they wanted to be consistent in their language to potential hunters on what they could and could not do within that entire encompassing piece of property. Because it's all attached. That whole piece of property is a big U at this point, but it is all attached.
The only thing we're discussing right now is the new addition to that specific property, is that correct?
No, we're actually discussing the old property, because we're correcting an error that was made back in 2005.
By the resolution that was done back in the day, correct?
Correct, yes.
Has anyone talked to the DNR about the possible restrictive nature of this as opposed to the resolution they've been operating under?
Yes, they, of course, their preference is to see that it be approved as was previously set up. However, they also have expressed that they don't want an inconsistent capability on the property.
So why did they want to have it the way it was before? What's their-
Adam, I think we need to be specific in what we want, basically, for any other possible, just as it may be affected by this ordinance also.
I, what they were, what they had, why they had wanted that before, Teresa, is they wanted to make the land as available as what they normally allow in any DNR property. Normally, if you go onto DNR property, you're allowed to use it within anything that's allowed under state law. However, when they get into a situation where they fall into, into city, inside city limits, they are now further restricted by what the city wants under, you know, home rule-related issues. So they are subject to what you want to do inside city limits. You can be more restrictive than DNR. They can't be more restrict, well, I guess they can, they own the property, so that's not, that's not true.
They can't be less restrictive-
They can't be less restrictive inside city limits than the city wishes to do so.
Again, my recommendation would be, as I discussed in the last conference meeting, shotguns with shoddy, bow and arrow, no single projectile weapons allowed on property.
Which is, which, the way it is written and before you is consistent with Tom's desire and both Bruce's. I, I say both of them, I know we all talked about, but they were kind of the ones that were pushing both of those issues.
Sure.
So this would not cover any new properties?
No, we would need to do that additionally, but I figured, once we figured out this, that part becomes real easy, and probably in the second reading, I would add in the language to include that secondary property as well. I thought for the purposes of the first reading, until you heard all this and worked out what you wanted to do, and we give DNR an opportunity to decide if they want to come back and talk to us about this issue, we needed to have this next step first.
Okay, I need a motion to approve-
I would move passage of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter 41, Public Health and Safety. Maybe we can correct the typo.
Is there a second?
There's a second one.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2015-269, the ordinance amending the code of ordinances of Sac City, Iowa by many provisions pertaining to Chapter 41, Public Health and Safety. Does anybody have any additional comments or questions or concerns? I'd call for a vote.
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. E is the third reading of ordinance number 2015-268, entitled and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the zoning ordinance.
Have we had any comments about this at all?
No.
Does planning and zoning, or the zoning officer plan to go about, in, going and telling people if they need to cut bushes if they're within this range?
How does he plan to do it?
I mean, is it going to be on a complaint-only basis, or is it going to be inactive, seeking where they are?
I think in items like this, it's going to be on a complaint basis, just like everything that the police do, rather than-
Not everything.
Going around and looking for-
No.
You understand what I mean?
Yes.
We're not going to be looking for, looking for trouble. But if someone complains, he's going to react.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve the third-
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-268, entitled and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the zoning ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the third reading of ordinance number 2015-268, the ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the zoning ordinance. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll ask for a vote.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item F is consideration of approving the establishment of a new disabled parking space between North Fifth Street and North State Street.
That's the one we talked about last meeting.
Yes, what did we come up with?
There wasn't a parking spot in front of where we were talking, so-
Okay.
That is the parking spot in front of her, and then there's the triangle.
Oh, it's right in front of her.
So, yep. So it is the first one, so.
Is it your recommendation to approve it?
Yes.
You recommend doing it.
So we're talking about Main Street?
On Main.
Between, but it says between North Fifth and North State.
On Main.
It doesn't say anything about Main Street.
Well, between North Fifth and North State is Main Street.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. It is. It's all interpretation.
It's in front of-
No, it's on Viking Bay's side of the street.
No, it's right on Main Street. They want to add another one.
Yeah, I know, I was here last week, but read this, don't say anything about Main Street.
Oh, you know, it's not here.
Well, it's between North Fifth, which is that one, and State Street, which is the one behind it. They want to establish one on that, and there's no place to establish anywhere else other than on Main Street. In between them, is the State Street the one in front of the courthouse?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So you've got-
Okay.
North Fifth, State, Main Street, you can't put a parking space in that one, it's good. It wouldn't be in front of Jackson Medical Supply.
Well, it was my understanding, it was on, on Main Street, it's intersecting the Fifth by the greens.
That'd be-
Right, correct. And John looked, and it is the first parking spot there, that there is no one in front of that.
Yeah.
None of the business owners are adjacent to that or objective?
I talked to greens, and they had no problem, because they have, they'll have one on each side of them now.
Okay, very good, thank you, Joe.
There is.
What's the technical way in which this gets established?
It just takes approval of the council. This is, the, these disabled parkings are not specifically spelled out in the ordinance itself.
Thank you.
Are there any further discussion? Are you ready to make a motion?
I would move to establish a disabled parking space in front of Jackson Medical Supply.
There you go.
Motion has been made and seconded to, to approve the establishment of a disabled parking space in front of Jackson Medical Supply, which is between North Fifth Street and North State Street. Any other comments?
On Main Street.
On Main Street. Any other comments? No questions? If not, I call for a vote.
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. G is consideration of going out to hire a laborer one.
About four, five, five months ago, we sent Mike Allen out to the sewer plant. We did not backfill his position. At the time, we had summer labor in here, which made it a little bit easier to do so without backfilling at that time. Summer labor is now gone, we're getting ready for, if we were to go through the process now, we could have somebody in and trained for snow season.
The, the, this has laborer one, two, is-
We never hire a laborer two.
You need a motion then?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we go out to hire a laborer one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to go out to hire a laborer one. Are there any additional comments or questions regarding this? If not, I call for a vote.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. H is consideration of resolution number 2015-13, resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on the possible vacation of city property. And this would be-
Hilltop Drive.
You're right, Hilltop Drive, that piece of property there, to Mae Beth Watson. Is there any discussion regarding that? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2015-14, resolution authorizing the establishment of, whoops, wrong one. Go on, I already crushed it off. 2015-13, resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on the possible vacation of city property.
And that date would be-
Okay.
Of September 22nd at 5:00.
And Tom, did you second it?
Yes, he did.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to consider resolution number 2015, to set a public hearing for resolution number 2015-13, a resolution for the vacation of city property for September 22nd at 5:00. Is there any additional comments, questions regarding that? If not, call for a vote, please.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I is consideration of resolution number 2015-14, resolution authorizing the establishment of an internal loan payment program for funds transferred from the special assessment fund and the gas fund accounts to the wastewater account for fiscal year 2015, year-end reports.
There is two minor corrections that were pointed out today. One is, is under Section 1, it should read, it should read for the special assessment and gas funds at the end. Instead of storm sewer, it should have said special assessment and gas funds. And then under Section 2, the second sentence, should say that it's repaying it to those two funds as well.
Would you repeat that, please?
Correct, sure. Section 1, where it says storm sewer, should read special assessment and gas funds. And then under Section 2, the second, second sentence should replace, should include not only special assessment, but the gas fund as well, for repayment purposes.
Have questions or comments or concerns?
Curtis, please. Can you give us an overview of what this does?
Sure.
Why this was established and-
Well, you might remember last year, we had to transfer $60,000 out of the Senate Solid Waste Fund, or Solid Waste, the Sanitary Sewer Fund to the Debt Service Fund because of something that the auditor recognized needed to be done. When we did that, that was unanticipated, so we had that one-time hit we had to deal with. And you might remember halfway through last year, we increased our rates, but there was an additional 17,000 that wasn't over what we had, had increased it. So not having that first six months in there put us in a position where we weren't back to the black, basically, by the end of the fiscal year. And we had talked some, you might remember, last year about this, December is kind of when we figured we would be getting back to the black. So this was an anticipated step that was going to be necessary.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I would move passage to resolution 2015-14 as amended, with the amended language as proposed by the city administrator.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made to pass resolution number 2015-14, the resolution authorizing the establishment of an internal loan payment program using the language as amended by the city administrator. Are there any other questions or comments?
No.
If not, a call for a vote, please.
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. J is consideration of resolution number 2015-15, entitled Resolution Amending the City of Sac City's Governing Body Rules and Procedure.
The area that is actually, was proposed to be changed is found under 1.15. Under 1.15, you will see subsection C and F include proposed language that just clarify particular points pertaining to the functions of the city administrator and the functions of the city council. That would be pages, page, roughly page eight includes all of the changes.
Curtis, please. What are the changes being proposed? What are the changes being proposed?
Uh, the inclusion of three new, um, subcategories of subsection C of one point fifteen that would read, I authorizing the removal of any permanently attached city property, including but not limited to buildings, fences, signs, flagpoles, or markers, except in the case when necessary to repair the property and reinstall it. J authorize any exceptions to written or established policy that has been approved by the council. And K authorize any unbudgeted expenses in excess of ten thousand dollars.
This sounds like a, like a, for the council?
Correct. Uh, under F, subsection F, you have the inclusion of number, uh, subset F, which says the city administrator shall not take actions in conflict with section one fifteen of this procedure before council approval at a regular or special council meeting.
Does it have any restrictions against the mayor taking those actions?
It does not include any changes in it to the mayor's responsibilities. Thank you.
But it does say that the city council is the one who has that responsibility.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I would move, uh, resolution two thousand fifteen-15, the resolution amending the city of Sac City governing body rules of procedure.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number fif, two thousand fifteen-15, resolution amending the city of Sac City governing body rules of procedure. Are there any additional comments or questions before I call for a vote? Would you call for a vote, Sandy?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunin?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
K would be? Yes.
One further question, I guess. Would the, uh, would the portion that limits the city administrator's power, if the, uh, if the mayor gave the city administrator an order to do something, this would then stop the administrator and make him approach the council before he can move forward? Is that accurate?
If it falls under the terms of what is covered under the city council's portion, yes.
All right, thank you.
I know what, if pertaining to, um, an order was not given, and nor would I have given order without discussing anything with the city administrator. So we will move on to K, which is consideration of approving reimbursement grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
In your packet is a copy of an agreement between the city and DNR that would allow for the, um, um, the use of a reimbursable grant to complete phase one inspection, which was the environmental audit inspection that, that you might remember we previously discussed pertaining to the Sunwise property, or the property known as the Sunwise property.
Have any discussions around this item?
No.
Barb, I think, Curtis.
Yes, Curtis.
Uh, so like, no, this will be the, this will be the first step, this will be the thing that, let me get the words right, limits your federal liability, um, in the future when it's complete, so that you can take over the property for the purpose of tearing it down. After this, I'm sorry.
So agreeing to this grant does not mean that we are committed to accepting the property?
That's correct. But it is the next step, is the next step in the process of getting this building, of getting this unsafe building demolished.
Yeah, if we don't take this step?
If you don't take this step, then, then you're essentially, well, the council has placed the burden on planning and zoning to get this environmental assessment done, so that then you will not have liability on the property should you take it over.
This grant is pretty much a guaranteed advance?
I would say yes, from the, from talking to Mr. Pins.
You have a contract in your hand, I mean, this is accepting of an award of reimbursable grant.
It's going to be a hundred percent, it's going to come from, we don't have a line item, it's going to come from the money that you agreed to let us spend, and then they're going to reimburse that.
And go back into the same line item.
Yes. Well, like I say, it's not a line item, but it's, it's coming back in, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the reimbursement grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the reimbursable grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. L, consideration of approving amendment to the Hometown Pride Partnership Agreement.
I can address this one. Uh, the agreement that we made when we got the Hometown Pride Grant did not limit Keep Iowa Beautiful's liability for things that are happening. To not Keep Iowa Beautiful realizes that perhaps was a minor error in their ways, they want this addition added to the Hometown Pride Agreement. They're asking of it from all of the six different Hometown Pride Partnerships that they have, and for this to happen, we would have to approve it as would the other eight communities in the county, the Board of Supervisors, and SCTD, and then all jointly sign it. This is basically limiting the liability of Keep Iowa Beautiful. The County Steering Committee did unanimously endorse doing this for Keep Iowa Beautiful.
Someone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the Hometown Pride Partnership Agreement.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the amendment to the Hometown Pride Partnership Agreement. Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, a call for a vote, Sandy.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number eight is public input on solid waste matters. Item number nine is council forum.
We are hosting the county league meeting Thursday at the cattle company.
What time is that?
Six, six, six-thirty?
Teresa, are you in there for cattle? Can you stand in for me? I can't be there.
Oh, Thursday night? No, I can't. I won't be there Thursday night.
Will you be there, Gary?
Sorry, Matty has volleyball.
We'll take care of it.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I'm going to have to exit the meeting now, if that's all right, so I just want to let you go.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Anything else, Adam?
That is all I have.
Okay.
It was six-thirty, Adam.
I guess that's, yeah, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's my pleasure.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
We got McGinty, Brunin, Perry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go, Barb, go.